Thank you very much, thank you very much, Angelica. So the first speaker of this session in the afternoon will be Professor Maya Buric. So it was allocated thirty minutes for talk. And please keep in mind that we have to leave at least five minutes for discussion.
Okay. Okay. So I would like to thank the organizers for the invitation. I don't hear myself, but hopefully all is okay, since it's... Today, I will speak about some work which we did with the Faculty of Physics in Belgrade with some collaborators, and it's basically aimed to quantization of gravity. So it's not really along the line of gravitational waves as the whole session is dedicated to. But it's more one of the topics of the very theoretical topics. Probably, but the afternoon will be like that anyway. Since this audience is probably mixed from astronomers, astrophysicists, but also some mathematicians, I will try somehow to do a different talk. The outline is given here. I tried to make a larger introduction to explain why do we at all pose these questions and to what aim, although obviously many of you know, especially those who deal with cosmology and cosmology-related things. Then I will introduce our framework, which is non-commutative geometry. And then I will explain the results which we obtained for the case of generalization of the sitter cosmology to this framework, which hopefully could be called the quantum cosmology, or it should be something like that. Okay, what I would say is that gravity is quite unique among physical phenomena and among and in human knowledge somehow, in gaining the knowledge. First of all, obviously astronomy was the first natural science which was based not on experiment but on observations which were quantitative. But also Newton's laws were the first explanation and the first very good or ingenious theory which would quantitatively explain everything that we knew, that people knew at the time about motion at the sky or at the earth. So gravity had an important role there in starting science as we know it today. Also, in physics, we praise gravity for inventing or coming to be invented, both classical mechanics and relativistic mechanics, namely Newton's laws and Einstein's special and general relativity, which are also today, especially general relativity, a great motivation for many theoretical physicists to do work at all. But also one should say that these theories, first of all, obviously, Newton along with classical mechanics invented differential calculus, along with lagnits, of course, and therefore also started completely new chapter in development of mathematics, while Einstein somehow turned the attention back to geometry, I would say, after several several centuries of development of mathematical analysis. And also, these are examples of very close relations which exist between mathematics and physics where very often applications to physics in fact start or invigorate research in mathematics. And to end this list, I should say that one of the feature of gravity is that it cannot be quantized, or more precisely, it has not been quantized by now. Unlike other fundamental forces, and this provides us with great motivation to work on it, on quantization of gravity. This problem is actual since nineteen fifty's or something, and still unsolved. In order to list some important results, of course, I will relate to general relativity and use some usual shortcuts for theories like GR. I would sample, for example, the fact that Einstein gravity, or Einstein first noticed that spacetime basically is a dynamical object, which interacts with matter, and by no means can we assume that it has its existence independent of the matter, that it's not just a framework where everything happens, but that it depends on motion of matter within it. And of course, or in particular, this allowed for the first time to pose the question of cosmology, which is what is how our universe evolves. Einstein himself first believed that universe is the universe is static, but then obviously, observations proved him wrong. The second thing is this very deep insight that gravity can be completely described by geometry, or that they are equivalent to some extent. And important thing there is that these are completely independent notions, I mean completely independent areas, but they are very intricately related. Of course, quantities which we measure or effects which we think that are real should be described by some invariant quantities or some general characteristics of, let's say, Riemannian manifolds, or which are typical for general relativity. For example, a set of geodesic lines, or we have curvature invariance like scalar curvature and so on. So it doesn't mean that whatever effect we find in one specific set of coordinates is something physical unless we try to check really the physical behavior or invariant behavior of either fields or point-like matter or so on. However, there is another description of gravity which is closer to physicists, and that is through classical field theory. Namely, we can introduce metric tensor G mu nu, which defines the distance. And we can write the action for this field and do variational equations for our principle of minimal action to obtain classical equations, and these are exactly Einstein equations. So basically, you can either, somehow, these two descriptions are equivalent, but it does not necessarily mean that they will have to be equivalent after quantization. And third, also very much appreciated property of general relativity is its invariance under changes of coordinate, or as we said, diffeomorphism invariance, which also could be one of the guiding principles how to define a theory, which is more or less on the same level or as the previous two which I mentioned. One very important result in general relativity won today, this year, the Nobel Prize, two Penrose. And unfortunately, Hawking died, although he would certainly get one quarter of a Nobel Prize if he were alive, if he was alive in beginning of October. And this result says that solutions to Einstein equations have generically had singularities. Well, his result is from nineteen sixty-five. It was a series of papers, first Penrose, then Hawking, and then together. And the important thing about it is that although it's purely theoretical result, they wanted to impose some physical physical conditions on it. So they asked about properties of solutions in circumstances when there is real matter which is a source of the gravitational field. And by real matter, one usually assumes that it's some, there are some fields which are classical, so they they have positive energy, or so one assumes energy conditions and also about some boundary conditions. So this was a very important result in for general relativity, but also from the point of understanding really solutions of Einstein equations is problematic, because usually in physics we do not have singularities, we do not have infinite pressure or infinite curvature or any type of singularity of that form. In any case, since matter is quantized, as we believe, all matter is quantized, either as in quantum mechanics, as point particles, which is an approximation which we can apply in non-relativistic physics or quantum fields. If the velocities become large, then we have to describe matter by quantum field theory. So obviously, we have to couple Einstein gravity class, or we have to couple gravity with matter. So we have at least two questions, how to couple classical gravity to matter and how to quantize gravity, and then couple quantized gravity to matter. The first question basically was, is more or less solved than most of, and obviously, the effects of quantum field theory or quantized matter are seen in the universe like CMB radiation or whatever. There are many which are measured in astrophysics today. And we see that more or less we have many models which quite well describe quantization of classical or effective gravity to quantum field theory, either scalar or other. But the open question is how to quantize gravity and then obtain everything as a limit of it. I mean, in the semi-classical limit, step by step. Basically, what people did in the early sixties already was to do the standard thing. One possibility was, since we know that gravity is a field theory, then we describe classical field theory, find the vacuum solution, which would contain minimal energy, whatever it was, and then expand the theory about the vacuum and quantize perturbatively, since basically we know how to do perturbative quantization and not much more than that. The other possibility would be like in quantum mechanics. We write dispersion relation for gravitational field. This would be some kind of equation or constraint equation, and then quantize this relation, and then we obtain something which is called Willard-DeWitt equation, but this equation basically is not, is functional equation, and therefore...
Sorry for interruption, you have five minutes more.
What?
You have five minutes more for your talk.
But I started at three ten. What is the time?
Yes, ah, sorry, 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 for ten minutes, ten minutes. Because you have to leave five minutes for question and discussion.
Okay, I probably, okay, I didn't probably I haven't seen the latest, the latest schedule, okay.
You have thirty minutes in total, and twenty-five minutes for talk and five minutes for discussion.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, let me then go a little bit faster. So there are other reasons to quantize gravity. For example, it is the only force which we believe is fundamental, but the other three are quantized. Then classical singularities have to be unphysical. And then, of course, there is this heuristic reason that there is no a priori justification to do any extrapolation all the Planck scale, all the way to the Planck scale. So perhaps the structure of spacetime is different. And there is a further problem of quantum field theory which is called ultraviolet divergences, which we hope could be solved by quantum gravity. So the point is that we would assume that the structure of spacetime might be different at the Planck scale or at very small scales, for example, it could be discrete, and perhaps the real or quantum spacetime does not have really points. So there are various possibilities to to develop these ideas or to do something completely different. But what we would like to do, or what we did in the previous in some previous years in non-commutative geometry. And this area was developed by many, both physicists and mathematicians. But what time will use or what we typically use is this formalism of the moving frames, just applied to this non-commutative setting. Of this, since I have to hurry from this slide, I would just say that there are many different possibilities to define non-commutative space, but basically, its main elements are always are always operators. So it's either some kind of algebra of operators, it can be algebra of matrices, or Lie algebra, or some other kind of algebra. And there are many examples of this, of such non-commutative spaces, but the main point is that most of the examples work in two dimensions, or model two-dimensional spaces. And what has been very difficult is to model four-dimensional spaces. So the space which we will describe, this four-dimensional fuzzy de Sitter space, or non-commutative de Sitter space. The elements of this construction are as follows. So we have coordinates which do not commute, and therefore, we have uncertainty relations, and not all coordinates can be measured together. I mean, at the same time or simultaneously. But we can know something about the non-commutative space or the possible set of coordinates by the spectrum. Also, in order to define connection or to define differential geometry, we need to see what is the, what are the momenta. And this can be done also. And in terms of momenta, we can define the metric tensor and the tetrad, or the field by. And thus, we can obtain whatever we need for physics. For example, we can obtain Laplacian, so we can define the Klein-Gordon equation or harmonic functions, then we can define, in principle, I mean, it's we can define curvature, torsion, covariant derivatives, and so on. So now I go to my model, which is modeled along or in a very similar manner as we defined usual de Sitter space as an embedding in a flat five-dimensional space. That is, in the commutative case, I can do a similar thing with operators. If I pronounce that my coordinates now are proportional to these W operators or Pauli-Lubansky operators of the de Sitter algebra, then we see that Casimir relation, that one of the Casimir operators is constant. In fact, is completely analogous to the embedding in the commutative case. And therefore, one can assume that fuzzy de Sitter space is defined by a specific unitary reducible representation of this of this algebra. Okay, here I define the momenta, and indeed, when one applies the formalism, one gets the line element of the de Sitter space, and then identifies that the cosmic time is basically given by this formula. It depends on this, in fact, this formula is the same as the classical one. Now I list some representations. And and also these details anyway were not so important. So when we go to representations, which is not trivial, we find concrete, concrete way how these coordinates look. And we can we can try to see really what are the eigenvalues or what is the set of values that these non-commutative coordinates can obtain. One needs to solve eigenvalue equations. And then we get the following results. For example, this embedding time coordinate is discrete. That is, it holds for all representations. But the spatial coordinates have continuous spectrum, like X or Y having quantum mechanics. So this means that they are very similar to the usual coordinates which we have which we have in quantum mechanics, except they, of course, do not commute. But what is interesting is that when we go to the cosmic time tau, which I describe here by tau, and try to see what is its spectrum or what are the possible values which one can get by measuring tau. And then there are some very fine mechanisms come, or you obtain specific complications. And then you see that in order to be able to define cosmic time properly, you have to choose some subspace of physical space states, which are defined by a certain boundary condition, which is like that. And the eigenvalues of cosmic time basically in this picture are the are these points on the, they are defined by section, intersection of the straight line with this with this ratio, which is for large lambda becomes tangent, because the vessel function, these are the vessel functions tend to sines and cosines, so this is tangent for large lambda. For small values of lambda, this is something which is not periodic. But what we can conclude, that time is basically discrete. One can do some more calculations. For example, we want, we would like to know what are the, what is the expectation value of the radius of the universe? It's specific moments of cosmic time. And we get a very nice result, namely that this expectation value is always positive, it's never zero. And this fact means that there is no Big Bang singularity. The radius of the universe is bounded below, and it can never vanish. So in this sense, this model resolves this paradox that at the initial point, universe was had radius equals zero and that equals to infinity. For large time, the universe behaves normally as the sitter universe, because it, its radius grows exponentially with time. What is important, so time is discrete, but it can be visible only in what I call deep quantum region, that is, at the very beginning of time. Later on, when we move away from the Planck scale and we calculate the difference between two eigenvalues, we see that the difference is tend to zero, or that effectively spacetime is continuous for large values of time. There are also some very specific or nice properties further, and one of them is that this, this technical point of choosing a self-adjoint extension induces spontaneous symmetry breaking at the Planck scale, but also in the macroscopic limit, we have the full symmetry. So we have, the behavior of the model is completely classical in the macroscopic limit, but at the Planck scale, we have strange or new ways to have symmetry and to have... So this is the last slide. My conclusion is that in this example, we see how non-commutative geometry can give new mechanism to solve singularity problems of general relativity, and at the same time preserve everything that we know and measure today in the macroscopic spacetime. And of course, this deserves further investigation. One obvious candidate which would, which we would like to describe is the fuzzy black hole. But this, due to the fact that it has less symmetries, is a much more technically difficult problem. Okay, that would be, I suppose.
Okay, okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much. We have time for a few questions or remarks. If there are no questions, I have some historical remark about your introductory part of your talk. Yes, so when Einstein suggested his model, static universe model, practically, one of the main obstacle against such a model was that his model was unstable. But real model, let's let us say, Big Bang cosmology, was practically confirmed only after observation of CMB. But before that, this time, so people had many, many different, let us say, models, including steady state, let us say, Big Bang, and other, many others.
I would say that also Hubble observations were the first confirmation that spacetime is expanding.
No, no, it's not quite solid observation, because Hubble observed only local vicinity of our, let us say, system of universe, very small part. And I remember that even few, but not remember, but I read it in, let us say, textbooks and monographs, that in fifties and sixties, people have discussed different models for universe. And for instance, Feynman wrote lectures on gravitation, and in sixties, he said that there are different opinions, including steady state, for instance, which was introduced by Hoyle and Narlikar and others, like, let us say, equivalent, let us say, models for the universe evolution, so.
Yes, okay, it's clear that that's what I said. It's not always easy to extract invariant predictions, because you always have to calculate in specific set of coordinates. I mean, similar thing was with the energy of gravitational waves, whether they transport energy or not. This was a question which was not clarified, clarified for some time, I mean, for some decade.
If there are no other question, let us thank the speaker again. Thank you. And next speaker of this session will be Professor Radovanovic, and he will show the title of his talk. Thank you. Is it okay?
It is okay. Thank you.
So first of all, I would like to thank the organizer for invitation. This is my first participation in the astronomical conference in general. And as you see, the title of my talk is noncommutative SO23 model. Uh this is common work with my colleagues from Faculty of Physics, Maria Dmitrijevic-Jiric, Dragulj Gortin and Nicola Konik. Okay, here you see the overview of my talk. First, my first part will be some kind of introduction, very similar to Maya talk, so I can skip some details maybe here. Then I will define commutative SO3 model. This is, this model is standard gauge theory based on anti-decider group as a gauge group. And then we construct this model. Uh we we deform this model on noncommutative settings. That means that we analyze SO23 model on noncommutative spacetime. Uh in that way, we obtain noncommutative gravity action. And we analyze this action. We will see that this model predicts that noncommutativity is a source of curvature and torsion of the spacetime. And we especially consider how noncommutativity deform in Kowski spacetime. Uh and after that, in the last part of my talk, if I have enough time, I will discuss how we can introduce matter or field, fields in this model, especially Dirac field and electromagnetic field and their interactions. Okay, and finally conclusion. Okay, and my talk is basic is based on the following paper with my colleague I mentioned at the beginning of my talk. And now, uh we know that general relativity and quantum field theory are uh leading theories of modern physics, but as Maya said, both of these theory uh encounter singularities. For example, quantum field theory, we usually, when we when we calculate loops diagram, we obtain singularities and but fortunately, there is there are procedure uh how we can remove remove singularity or to be more precise, how to absorb singularity into physical parameter like coupling constant mass and fields in the theory. But uh this is not possible to do with general relativity. So general relativity is Einstein general relativity is not renormalizable and not unitary theory. And uh in many years, we tried to find a way how to quantize gravity and how to unify gravity with other interactions in nature. Uh these modifications are usually related with modification of the spacetime structure or modification of notion of point particles. Many, many, mainly attempts in 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 merging quantum gravity uh general relativity and quantum gravity are string theory, loop quantum gravity, noncommutative geometry and many others. Um so in noncommutative uh theory, coordinate don't commute. That this means that we cannot simultaneously measure coordinates. And in my talk, I will consider the simplest case of noncommutativity where commutator between coordinate is constant, theta mu nu here is constant. And this type of noncommutativity is known as um uh canonical noncommutativity. And canonical noncommutativity is analyzed in many data details in many papers. For example, on this space, on this noncommutative spacetime, uh we analyze standard model, quantum electrodynamics, supersymmetric field theory and investigate and analyze renormalizability or quantum properties of this model. Um trying to answer does noncommutativity can improve uh divergences in field theory and also many phenomenological consequences was were analyzed in many papers. Okay, uh but now we are interested in noncommutative gravity or how to how to define how to construct gravity model on on noncommutative spacetime. The main difficult uh in in this in 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 this uh approach is to how to implement the diffeomorphism symmetry, how to merge the diffeomorphism symmetry and noncommutativity. And there are many attempts in that direction. I mention here some some of them. Uh for example, noncommutative spectral geometry from Alan Con, Shamsedini and many others. Also, frame formalism from John Madora and Maya Burich. Uh also, twist approach is based on a principle that the diffeomorphism symmetry is twisted. This approach is advocated by Julius Sves and his group. And finally, I would mention recent uh investigation related to nonassociative and noncommutative gravity in the first order formalism using so-called braided L-infinity algebra approach. Okay. I I will start now with commutative anti-decider model. As I said, this model and said at the beginning, this model is standard gauge theory with SO23 uh gauge group. This group is isometric group of anti-decider space and this group um has 10 generators. I denote these generators with M capital A B. A and B takes take values zero, one, two, three and five. And commutation relations for this group is given here. This is similar to standard Lorentz algebra. But here eta A B A B are is five dimensional, five dimensional metric. Uh then, uh okay, then uh a particular representation for anti-decider generator can be obtained from gamma matrices in five dimension. Uh gamma matrices are actually Clifford generators. Uh and uh uh ADS generators are are actually proportional to uh commutators of two gamma matrices. Gamma matrices in five dimension, this is Dirac gamma matrices, then can be obtained from four dimensional gamma matrices uh in this way. This is a particular representation. There are many choices, of course. And first four gamma matrices are a product of uh four dimensional gamma matrices and gamma five, while the last or fifth gamma matrices is four dimensional gamma five matrices. Small index A take value uh 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 this is Minkowski index, they take value uh zero, one, two and three. Okay. Uh now, we can decompose the generator generators of ADS group into two part. This generator, the not generators, the not as small indexes A and B are actually Lorentz generators. While the last one is proportional to the gamma matrices and this is momenta. Uh L is a constant which has dimension of length. So ADS algebra can be rewritten in this form. This form is very similar to point carry algebra, except the fact that momenta here uh 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 don't commute. But if we put limit, L L go to infinity, we will contract this algebra and we will obtain uh uh point carry algebra. Okay, uh the similar thing is with gauge potential, we have introduced gauge potential, which is one form. And component of gauge potential, we divide in two part. This part is spin, spin connection. And the second one, omega A five components are actually, this is written here, are actually fear binds or tetra's. Okay, and these quantities transform correctly um under under local Lorentz symmetry. Okay. Now, uh we, now we will define field strain tensor from gauge potential. And the components of fields, fields, field strain tensor are split it uh again in two parts. The first part, F mu nu small A B are actually Riemann curvature tensor plus this term. And A five components of uh curvature of of fields, fields, uh field, uh field strain tensor um are actually torsion. Now, uh we want to construct the action. Uh and we firstly introduce auxiliary field. Auxiliary field phi has the has dimension minus one. And this field transform in a joint representation of SO23 group. And this uh auxiliary field is constrained by this this equation. And now, uh the action is actually sum of these three terms. The first term is so-called Stellavest action. This is, you see a trace of two field strain tensor and one auxiliary fields, etc. Okay, so a full action, uh full action is sum of these three actions with arbitrary coefficients here, C one, C two and C three. And this action is invariant under local SO23 transformation. Then we have to reduce to break the local anti-decider symmetry down to the local Lorentz symmetry. And it was, it was, it was done by going in so-called physical gauge where five, fifth component of auxiliary field is equal L by the other one ones are equal zero. Uh uh this is, this this break, breaking of the symmetry is not spontaneous break of the symmetry. This is gauge fixing actually. And after that, after gauge fixing, uh uh after gate fixing of anti-decider symmetry, we obtain the following action. Uh this action consists of three terms. The first term is Gauss-Bonnet term and this is topological term. We can, we can ignore it. The second one is Einstein-Hilbert term, so we have to take that C one plus C two is equal one. And the last term is cosmological term. This is cosmological constant. Okay, and this action is actually is written in the first order formalism and this action has local Lorentz symmetry and and also diffeomorphism symmetry. So uh starting from uh the gauge theory with anti-decider group, we actually, after breaking that symmetry, we obtain uh general relativity. Now, okay, here I I wrote some paper related with this part of my talk, previous part of my talk. And now, I would say that this action is actually, sorry, uh the the previous written action is actually starting point for uh constructing, construction of noncommutative gravity theory. So, as I said at the beginning, we work in uh with special type of noncommutativity where theta is constant tensor. And instead to work with abstract algebra, we work with uh usual commutative coordinate and commutative fields, but instead of usual product, instead, yes, instead of usual product, we use so-called摩尔vial or star product, which is, which is given here. And it's easy to check that commutator between two coordinate, a star commutator between two coordinate is uh theta mu nu. Uh commutative quantities and noncommutative, uh commutative and noncommutative quantities in fields actually are related by cyber written map. This means that all noncommutative fields in the theory, we can expand as a power series in noncommutative parameter theta and coefficient in this expansion are standard field, how to say. And so we actually apply cyber written map and enveloping algebra approach. And in that way, this is very, very long calculation. But in that way, we can transform this noncommutative action. This is noncommutative action. Uh had quantities here are noncommutative quantities. You see that uh we here use a star product. And this action is invariant under noncommutative symmetry. And then we apply cyber written map. That means that we expand the this action uh in power series in noncommutative parameter theta. Theta is, noncommutative parameter is some kind of fundamental constant in the theory like H bar in quantum mechanics. And first order correction, first, sorry, zero order term is Einstein-Hilbert term plus cosmological constant. The first correction is unfortunately equal zero, so we had to calculate the second order correction. This is very uh very huge, long calculation, but uh we calculated. And then we have to break the symmetry down to the local Lorentz symmetry. So the result is, this is part of, of result is given here. And you see that, for example, in this result, you have Riemann tensor, coupling, torsion with curvature, T square term, term, terms and many others. And uh this action, I will skip this part, this action is invariant, as I said, um on a a a local Lorentz symmetry. But diffeomorphism symmetry is broken. I will, uh uh breaking of diffeomorphism symmetry, I will, I will postpone for for later. Then we easily can can find the uh uh equation of motion varying the action with respect to fear bind and spin connection. And we see that I did, I didn't, didn't write here explicit users for energy momentum tensor and spin tensor, but we see that noncommutativity is actually source for curvature and torsion. And now, uh we consider one special solution. We take that cosmological constant is equal zero and that matter is absent here. So Minkowski spacetime is solution of Einstein equation. And then we try, we we find the correction, noncommutative correction to Minkowski spacetime. That means that we calculate how noncommutativity deform split, flat metric. ETA mu nu is flat metric while H mu nu uh is correction. This correction is second order in theta. And here I wrote equation for H mu nu. This equation is obtained from Einstein equation. Including, including uh noncommutative deformation, of course. And then we find explicit solution. We see here that components of the metric are second order or or second order in theta and quadratic in coordinates. Then we calculate curvature, Riemann tensor, and we conclude that our spacetime is curved. But now we actually rewrite a component of the metric in terms of Riemann curvature tensor and the result. tensor, and the result is given here. This is, this result is very simple, and what we can conclude from this result, we conclude, this result is actually form of the metric written in the Fermi-normal coordinate. Fermi-normal coordinates actually are coordinates of free-falling observer. This is observer who is moving along the geodesic, and these coordinates are actually inertial coordinates. This is different from Riemann-normal coordinate. Riemann-normal coordinate are flat in point of the manifold and small neighborhood of the manifold, but these coordinate are flat or inertial for observer moving along the geodesic. Okay. So, the measurement performed by local observer who is moving along the geodesic are actually described in Fermi-normal coordinates. We are in general relativity, we can use any type of coordinates, but the natural choice for free-falling observer are Fermi, is Fermi-normal coordinates. That means that inertial observer who is moving along the geodesic measure constant non-commutativity. That means, and now, we can understand the breaking of diffeomorphism symmetry. Difeomorphism symmetry is broken because we are in particular coordinate system. I would say once again that in this coordinate, this is x coordinate, non-commutativity is constant. Non-commutativity in any other arbitrary coordinates can be obtained calculating star commutator between y coordinates. Okay, and this is given here. I will now skip this part. And now, I would like to, actually, I would like to introduce matter field into the game. And we start, we first start from Dirac field. We couple Dirac field with gravity in the framework of our model. And commutative, commutative action is given here. Psi is Dirac spinor, phi is auxiliary fields, m is mass. And then, this action has commutative SO23 symmetry, and then we break this symmetry down to the local Lorentz symmetry, and that way, we obtain standard coupling between gravity and Dirac spinor. Now, we go, how to say, we go to non-commutative spacetime, we deform this action, keeping the SO23 symmetry. And then, we expand this action using Cyberwitten map. This result is more or less given here. There are many interactions term, so this means that in this approach, we, non-commutativity, we see as a correction, as a new interaction in the model, actually. Okay. And now, I will skip this part. I would, I would like to say something about modification of Dirac equation in flat spacetime. So, we can again go to the flat spacetime, and we see from our previously obtained result, and we see that Dirac equation is modified, and this is new interactions term proportional to the non-commutative parameter theta. From this action, we can find modification of the Dirac equation because of non-commutativity, and this equation is given here. And now, we want to find some physics here. We analyze the electron who is moving along z direction, and we also assume that non-commutativity is in X-Y plane. And then, we find how, we calculate how dispersion relation for electron is modified because of non-commutativity. Result is given here. Okay, this is energy, positive and negative energy from electron, and these term, these term are actually theta corrections. Okay, from this dispersion relation, we can also find velocity of the electron. And what we, what we see here, we see that velocity of electron F energy depends on helicity of the electron. Is everything okay?
All is fine.
Okay, okay, sorry, 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 I will continue, sorry. Okay, so we see that energy and velocity of the electron depend on helicity. This is some kind of by-refrigerancy effect. Now, we include electromagnetic field. Because I am short with time, I will skip this part, okay? We consistently couple electromagnetic field with Dirac field and gravity in our model, and find no, find classical action, how to say, break the symmetry, and then go to non-commutative settings. Okay, and I will, I will speak just about this equation. This equation is obtained, this is equation of motion for electron in the flat spacetime, and we see that in addition to coupling to electromagnetic field, we have non-commutative correction. And finally, we consider electron moving in X-Y plane in the constant magnetic field in the present of the non-commutability. We take that theta 1, 0 component are different from, sorry, theta 2 component are different from 0, and then we solve non-commutative Landau problem, how to say, and the result is given here.
Excuse me, sorry for interruption. You have three minutes more, including question.
Okay, I'm at the end. Okay, this is last transference slide, sorry. So, we see that energy of the electron is the sum of these two terms. The first term is actually standard commutative Landau, relativistic Landau levels, and is principal quantum number, number s is plus minus 1. And correction is given here, and non-commutative correction is given here, and from this correction, we can, in non-relativistic limit, we can obtain magnetic dipole moment of electron. And we see that this term proportional to 1 is standard magnetic moment, which includes spin part and diamagnetic effects, but theta part here is induced magnetic moment is because of non-commutativity, present of non-commutativity. And if we assume that scale of non-commutability is 10TV, but I think that it is much larger. And also, we know that relative error in measurement of magnetic moment is about 10 to minus 13. We conclude that magnetic field should be 10 to 11 Tesla if we want to observe this induced magnetic moment. This magnetic field is so strong, it's not possible to produce this magnetic field in lab, but as I read somewhere, there are many astrophysical object which have so strong magnetic field. And finally, conclusion, in my talk, I analyze non-commutative SO23 star model in which, and also, we obtained modification of Einstein, Einstein gravity, and also modification of interaction between Dirac field and electromagnetic field with gravity in the framework of this model. And also, one, I think, very important conclusion is that, is that non-commutativity is constant for inertial observer. Okay, that's all.
Okay. Thank you very much. Unfortunately, we have no time for question, but if there is urgent question, one urgent question is, you could ask.
Okay, can you hear me?
Okay, if there are no urgent question, let us thank speaker.
Next morning, Professor Zaharu, we have a question from our colleague.
Okay, it's a very short question. Okay, if this, if this non-commutative theta constant is not constant, if it is the function of coordinates, what would be the consequences? Will there be significant concerning the resulting equations?
Okay, there are many attempts to, how to say, to enlarge, to put non-commutativity to become more complicated, or to consider theories on spacetime via, which are not canonical deform, but it is very hard to calculate anything with that. As I know, in literature, the people, the physicists usually consider lead type of deformation of commutator between coordinate and also quadratic type of non-commutativity. But we see here that theta constant non-commutativity is something like Planck constant in quantum mechanics. That means that if we, if we use Deckard coordinate and Deckard momenta, the commutator is proportional to H-bar. But in any other coordinates, the commutator is complicated. H-bar is only leading term. This is similar here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, let us thank speaker again.
Okay.
Next speaker of this session will be Professor Branka Dragovich. About non-local. Okay, 30 minutes for talk, including questions and remarks.
Okay. Okay, good afternoon to all participants. It's my pleasure to give a talk at this very interesting and useful conference, and I would like to thank organizers, first of all, Professor Angelika Kovacevic for invitation to the talk. As one can see from the title of my talk, I will speak about so-called non-local modified gravity, and I will consider cosmological aspects of this non-local modified gravity. This talk is based on joint with my colleagues Ivan Dimitrievich, Doran Rakic, and Yelena Stankovich. Here are contents of my talk. After an introduction, I will speak about non-local modified gravity model. In fact, this is a class of models where we have here standard Einstein here, and at this place is, and this place is the non-local term, where this P and Q of R are some differentiable functions of R, where R is scalar curvature. And what we consider, in fact, it's three cases, when P of R is equal to Q of R, and is equal to square root of R minus 2 lambda, where lambda is cosmological constant, then R minus 4 lambda and R. In fact, I will not consider all these cases, but in detail, in detail, I will consider this one case, and it means that our action will be in this form here. And of course, there will be some, there will be some concluding remarks. At previous talks, there were some words, many words about general relativity, so I will say only a few words. What is related to my talk as motivation? It is well-known that general relativity is one of the most profound and beautiful physical theories. Sorry. Sorry, sorry, there was a call of the phone. But, but general relativity is not a complete theory of gravity. There are some problems, and I will only mention some of them. It's that it is a non-reversible theory if we want to quantize it. Then, to explain, or better, to describe accelerated expansion of the universe, and also motions of dynamics of stars in spiral galaxies, for example, general relativity has to introduce also dark energy and dark matter, but they are mysterious so far, and there is no laboratory evidence for that. And general relativity is not tested and confirmed at the very large cosmological scales, so we have to be careful when we apply general relativity to the cosmology. And what is already also mentioned under rather general state of the matter, we have that cosmological solutions of general relativity contain Big Bang, Big Bang singularity. And also, I would like to mention that it seems unnatural that general relativity can be theory of gravity at all, at all scales, or all spatial scales, from Planck scale to the universe as a whole. As we know, physical theories depend on scales, usually on some scales, or, and for example, of complexity of the system. And because of these and some other problems, there is a sense to look for the generalization of general relativity. And there are many attempts, but here we'll consider and non-local approach to modification of general, of general relativity. Here are some references related to our work, but now I'll speak mainly about results of this first reference, which is entitled Cosmological Solutions of a Non-local which is entitled Cosmological Solutions of Non-local Square Root Gravity, which is published last year in Physics Letters B. And also, the next reference also is important. But about this reference, we'll speak our colleague Ivan Dmitrievich in the next in the next session. I would like to remind that when we say general relativity, in fact, we have in mind Einstein equation. And when we apply it to the universe as a whole, then we start from the assumption that a universe is homogeneous and isotropic spacetime. And the matter is also distributed so that it is that it is homogeneous and isotropic. And if we put these elements from this this distance element to the to this part of the Einstein equation and to this one, energy momentum tensor, then we get the Riemann equations, where we have as unknown this A. A is a cosmic scale, which tell us how universe is expanding. And we have here a first derivative and here a second derivative of this this scale factor. In nineteen ninety-eight, we know that it was discovered accelerating expansion of the universe. It means that this A with two dots over A is positive. So since this is here positive, right-hand side has to be also positive. And it means that this rho, where rho is energy density and P is pressure, that this rho plus three P has to be negative. And such kind of the matter is then called the dark energy. And in fact, if we look for the universe as a whole, according to this approach, there are sixty-eight percent of such dark energy. For the big velocities to describe big velocities as spiral galaxies, it was introduced dark matter, and it follows that there are twenty-seven percent of dark matter. So we have only five percent of the visible matter. And in fact, this is what we know as a standard cosmological model, which is lambda called dark matter, and also that it is flat space. So, as I already said, there is no experimental evidence of dark energy, dark matter. There is a sense to consider modification of Einstein general relativity. It means that that instead do to modify this part with the energy momentum to modify this left-hand part, which is geometrical sector of the theory. When we look for a modification, then we start, in fact, from the Einstein-Hilbert action. And from this Einstein-Hilbert action, we get Einstein equations, yeah? But when we say that we work on the modification, it means to replace this R here, which is a scalar curvature, with some combination of R, lambda, Ricci tensor, this Delambertian and many some other possible elements of Riemannian geometry. And since there is no theoretical principle which would tell us in what direction to to make modification, there are there are many, many, many approaches. And the most important, I can say, the most known is so-called F of R modified gravity. It means that here at this place, instead of the R, we take some function of the of the R. And there are many other, I have no time to speak about it. And one of the of the actual approach is so-called non-local modified gravity. It means that we take some function of R and also of this Delambertian. Maybe it can be also some other elements, but for my talk, it's enough of this R and and the box. So what's the matter with the non-local modified gravity? There are papers with inverse box in such form, or this is some particular form, and I will not consider it. What I will consider is that non-local operator has this form here, where it is an analytic function with respect to this box. And we start usually in our approach from this action here, where this P and Q are some differential functions of R. As I said already, and this F of box has this this form here. And for simplicity, to see better effects of the of this non-local term, we consider theory without matter. In fact, we will consider vacuum vacuum solutions. The corresponding equations of motion have this this form here, where, in fact, these first two terms correspond to the to the usual Einstein gravity. And all this is a consequence of the of the non-local term such with these derivatives. So we see that that we have derivatives up to the infinity. And it's not easy to solve, to to find some some solutions, but in some special cases, yes, one can, and we succeed. And even to get the exact, exact solutions. In the case when we apply to the universe as a whole in cosmological sense, and since the universe is homogeneous and isotropic, we have such symmetry, yeah? Then, equations of motion become, yeah, are reduced to the following two equations. It's enough to have these two equations, which are linear independent. It's trace, this one here, and also zero-zero component, which is here, yeah? And now we'll take for this P and Q, we'll take this first case. The second will be considered in the next session by our colleague Dmitrievich. So what I will speak in the sequel is related to to the case when we take that T is equal Q is equal square root of R minus two, two lambda. It means that we start from this action here with, as I said already, this form of the of the non-local operator. And we get a few exact few exact solutions, cosmological solutions. But I will speak now only about this one, which is most important for us. In fact, what we have here, if we look at this solution, we can see that there are two these parts. And this, I would like to remind that this T to the to the power two over three, in the in the Einstein theory, when we have dominance of the matter, then we have this this T over T to the power two over three. And so it will imitate, this part here will mimic dark matter. In fact, it will mimic effect dark matter in the sense that will have at the cosmological scale, to have effects, which are usually attributed to to the dark matter. And this part here is related to the dark energy. And the dark energy, in our case, is related to the lambda constant. In fact, in our case, lambda has to be different from zero. In other words, one can say that this model requires that lambda has to be different from zero. So, as I said, we have imitation or mimic of the dark matter by this cosmic time dependence and dark energy with this one. In fact, one can see it also from the Hubble parameter, which is written here. And we know that this one in the Einstein theory corresponds to the to the dark to the matter we have when we have dominance to the matter. And since we have, we don't have matter here, so we call this here as a as a dark as a dark matter, yeah? And this corresponds then to the to to the expansion, accelerated expansion, which is more accelerated than in the, this is the case, because we have here also this product of lambda with the cosmic time. Then, of course, we can write expression for the scalar curvature, which depends of the time. And what is very important in here, that for this solution, which is written here, that there is such such equality, which gives us possibility then to solve equations of motion. And as addition, we have, we should, we have to to take these two constraints that F, this function F of minus three over seven lambda and F prime with respect to the to this a box over here to the lambda have to be zero. And these requirements are satisfied by this form of the of the F of F of box, so that we have exponential function of box over lambda. One can also consider effective effective density energy and and the pressure. And if we consider this ratio here, when T tends to infinity, it's minus one. In other words, it's it's very, it's corresponds to the dominance of this lambda 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 term. One can take values for these cosmological parameters from the Planck two thousand eighteen results and also to calculate some, according to our formula, to calculate some some parameters and to compare them. So if we take, for example, this expression for the Hubble parameter and put values for the H zero and and T zero, we can calculate lambda cosmological constant. And we get this value here, which is almost the same as in the usual the usual calculations. One can also calculate when time for which Hubble parameter will be minimal, and it's for this value. And then Hubble parameter should be this one. It's some kind of the prediction in our case. Also, we can calculate the time when universe started this late time expansion, and it was about six billion years ago. Okay, one can calculate critical value for the matter and also to calculate this rho bar effective for the matter. And we get these values for this omega parameter, just as in the standard cosmological model. And when we take also that we have five percent of the of the usual matter, visible matter, then we get also for the this omega lambda point zero point sixty-eight, just as in the, as I said, in the usual case. Also, we have explanation here for the so-called coincidence problem. And in our case, it's a consequence that these terms here are of the same of the same order of the magnitude for present cosmic time T zero. And I'm going to the conclusion to say some remarks. So what we consider it, it's this non-local model, which is this square root of R minus lambda. And where this F of box has this form here, expressive form, this form here. And we found the exact, exact vacuum cosmological solution, which mimics dark matter and dark energy. We computed some cosmological parameters, which are in good agreement with observations. We also found some other exact vacuum cosmological solutions. But I didn't have time to present it here. And they are also interesting, but this is the most interesting, because we have dark, yeah, effects of the dark matter and dark energy. What is the next step? The next step is to test this model at other spacetime scales. at other spacetime scales. It means the scales of the of the galaxies or the solar system, for example. Also, we have our preliminary results about cosmic inflation. In fact, we have here inflation, which is very similar to the Starovinsky inflation. And what's the matter of the of the gravitational waves? We didn't consider in details. But what's the matter of the speed of the gravitational waves? We considered it and the speed of gravitational waves is the same as the speed of the of the of the light. So it's also one of the of the points which tell us that this model is very good and that we have to proceed with this model. And that's all. Thank you for your attention.
Okay, let us, let us thank speaker speaker for interesting talk. But we have time for a few short questions. If not, I would like to ask a couple of questions because it's
Yeah, okay.
Instead of function, F of function, you consider some differential operators. Even sometimes serious of differential equation, uh, operators. In this case, how high is order of differential equation? You have, because you have, you consider some alternative in this case, it has to be different and complicated. And probably also next question, which is related with first one, correspondence principle. In principle, in weak field gravitational field approximation, you have to have Newtonian gravity. And what about this weak field limit in your theory? It may be different.
Yeah, of course. We had already some preliminary results that tell us that it is okay. Yeah, what's the matter of this F of box? Yeah, as a consequence, we have in this, our equations of motion, we have this these derivatives up to the infinite order. So this is also in some sense a new kind of mathematical physics. In classical mathematical physics, we have equations of motion of motion which are the second order. We have here of the infinite order. And we also considered the question of the of the ghosts and and tachyons, and there is no problem with such choice of
Okay, but also I remember that for first versions of, let us say, alternative theories of gravity, like F A theories, solar system tests were difficulties. So in principle, it's, they did not satisfy these tests. I mean, Kupffer-Ciello at all theory, Rod Gold, so they had problems with solar system test.
Okay, yes, we have to do it in more details. And in fact, we will do it with some other other our colleagues who have a big experience with it. And it's, Yovanovitch, you know, your your
Yes.
collaborators, Borca and Pedro Yovanovitch. And yeah, thank you, thank you, Alexander. It's very nice to see you again.
Okay, it's for me, it's also it's pleasure.
Online.
Thank you again for very interesting talk. Thank you again. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And the next last speaker of this session will be Professor Mijalovic. 20 minutes for including questions and remarks.
Okay.
Please keep in mind that including questions, 20 minutes.
Yes, yes, of course. Do you hear me? I think you hear me, right?
Hearing you.
Perfectly. Thank you very much. Okay. This is a joint work with Daniela Brankovic, my PhD student, as you can see, we're here. And in fact, I will talk about some algebraic dependencies.
Professor Jarko, sorry, this is comment from organizers. We cannot see your presentation.
Oh, you can see, I put it. I have to put share, right, right.
Yes, thank you.
All right. All right, just a minute, just a minute.
The share screen is green button.
It's green. Yeah, I pressed the green button, but they have to choose my presentation. And where is it? It's over here. Do you see it now?
No.
No. It's strange.
Can you stop your presentation, please?
Yeah, and start again, right?
Yes, everything reboot.
Da 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 da.
So just click on the
Oh, yeah, I understand it. Yeah, 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 just a minute.
It's okay.
And now go to over there. And so what is that? It's interesting. I see everything, but they can't see my presentation. Ah, that's it. Screen sharing has failed to start. The window you selected is invalid. How it is possible? All right.
Can you close our other windows, except Zoom and your presentation, please?
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, but I don't have any, so many windows over here.
You can also share your whole desktop, so just click share button. And then
Yeah, put
the first option.
Yeah, yeah. Share. And that, now you probably see it. Do you see it now? Can you see it now?
Yeah, yes, we can see. You can now
Okay, now I can start. All right. I already presented Daniela Brankovic, the co-author of this talk. Ah, this is just a content, so I will pass it. And what is the goal of the lecture really to that to determine some algebraic dependencies between cosmological parameters. But the, but all motivation was really to use them to compute some events which appear in the evolution of the universe. The point is that cosmological parameters are usually taken as a function of time. But as you can see here, the last formula. Ah, I pressed another presentation, but doesn't matter. Okay, this is okay too. But you can see that this for time, the time is really an integral and this is elliptic integral, so it means that we cannot express it using elementary functions. And so, in, you know, in a sense, we cannot compute them directly, or at least to find some analytical formulas, which correlates scale factor, for example, and time. We can infer this this integral using Friedman equations. The previous talk, Professor Dragojic, really explained in details what are really Friedman equations. So I will omit it here, just to mention that they were discovered almost 100 years ago. And here is just one more term, this lambda term, which represents the cosmological constant, okay? And all really motivation, as I said, is to to find this algebraic dependencies and to use them in some way. For example, to, as I said, to compute some particular events in in the past or even in the future. Also, one application would be to take some other parameter instead of time as a main parameter. The point is that we really try to express all the parameters, cosmological parameters, density parameters, Hubble parameter and so on, on time. But usually, it is not always quite natural to do that. We'll see in particular, when we find, when I show you these dependencies, that it is, for example, much more appropriate to express all other parameters using, for example, the scale factor, not the time, right? And here is, here is another form of this first equation I I solution. In fact, it's very interesting one, is very similar. But this is not anymore a constant integral. As you see, it, this is direct connection between time and accelerate scale factor, all right? Here is A, as you can see. And the point is that this function, it is not so much known. In fact, it's nothing else, but really the inverse of the solution of the Friedman equations. So in fact, this function represents, in a way, a solution of Friedman equation. We can find it. This integral is, it's not so even so complicated, so elliptic integral, but we can express it. But not, for example, of the scale factor, which is the subject of these differential equations. But but the inverse function, what it means, it's known to all mathematicians. We have that these relations really hold, which means this really inverse function. And as a, as a kind of, okay. How to 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 do that? It's very easy. Here is another form of how to 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 find this solution here. It's a, we just to, we have to study a little bit this equation, which is in fact another kind of Friedman equations. It's very easily deduced from Friedman equations, okay? And it's very, very well known. And as an example, ah ha, when, and usually, in the, when some some computings are done, usually is, if you want to compute some event in the evolution of the universe, we have to some authors approximate this integral or even not computing that integral, not even where is the, ah ha, that's it. Approximate in some way. And then there's they have using some additional assumptions. And then they do compute, do computing. Here is an example, it's a very well known. It's an example of Karl-Preis-Tarner formula from, it was found 30 years ago. But it's a very simple solution. What is that? It is for the pressureless flat universe with cosmological constant. What it means pressureless? It means that the density parameter for radiation is 0, taken 0. And the taken is also that the curvature equal to 0, as you can see over here. So this integral over here, you omit these two terms. And then you got this integral, which is very easy to find. And you can compute and find it, this approximation, the approximative formula. Usually, it is derivative some other way, not in that way. In fact, I even didn't see they use any, 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 any derivation of this kind in the literature. So probably first, we have to explain, not to enter too much, just to to say that there's something very often misunderstanding. In fact, we have curvature radius and we have the scale factor, the curvature radius of the universe. It's a, in fact, the radius of the universe. So in fact, Friedman equation refer to, really to, to, to the curvature radius. But if we do some normalization, as you can see over here, then we can obtain the Friedman equation that I explained you before. Before, okay, so this is that equation written with this normalized curvature radiation, but we call it now the scale factor. All right, here are, I will just present you, these algebraic dependencies. As you can see, they are here, all right? You can see them. There are altogether several parameters, these density parameters. And then on the next screen, you can see definitions of these density parameters. They're all well known to all cosmologists, but so they're just definitions usually taken in in the literature. But if we look in some formulas, not, we don't have time to express all them, to 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 show them all here. We can find this eight or nine, nine equations, second three, four, five, six, seven, eight equations, okay? And seven parameters, all right? So it means that that we have and eight. Okay, we have one more unknown than their equations. So usually, we need only, what are X and Y? X and Y, in fact, are just some kind of, some kind of determinates, they're auxiliary in in these equations. But the point is that we can express all of them using them. As you can see, Y is very easily expressed by using X. So in fact, we have less equation, say, seven equation, six unknowns. Six equations and seven unknowns. And so we usually need one more equation to to solve them, all right? To solve them. So that is, we can, okay. So how we do that? How how we can use them? We can use them, okay, starting from the, from the from the some given or some values that are measured today. Already they're explained, also explained in the previous talks. I will not enter much to them. You can recognize over there that they can be founded. Many probes, physical probes are devoted to to that, okay? And now, when we know them, we can use very easily them to compute what? To compute some events in the in the evolution of the universe. The first example, for example, is very simple one, to find the age of the the age of the the universe. How it is done? Just replace them in that integral and you get this value. Okay, numerically, you can integral. This is the first integral, it's on the first, some of the first slides. Or we can use another form also, but A is equal today, at that moment, A of the null is equal to 1, because it is normalization done of the radius curvature really in respect to the the current time moment. So here is another example. If we want to compute the time when it, when it will double its expansion. So we take that time, time moment tau, it is unknown to us, we put it's equal to 2. When we put that is equal to 2, using the the this algebraic dependencies, we can find all the values for that mine, for that moment, all right? As I told you, we really, all the cosmological parameters expressed, we can express in respect to way because that we have, as I said, six equations, seven unknowns. So we can express one, using them as a free, as a free variable. And we put A take equal to 2. And when we find these values using this algebraic dependencies, we can compute that integral and we find it in 20, for 25, 0 years, all right? And here is a little bit, I will, I don't know if I will And here is a little bit, I will, I don't know if I will have time, but probably just some ideas. The third examples, in fact, we use these formulas to compute all the events now. For example, this transition from matter dominated era to, to dark matter dominated era and so on. Here is an interesting one example, transition from radiation to matter dominated era. Just to, to remind you, matter dominated era follows radiation era, while radiation era just arise, arise after the, the inflation, okay? In fact, almost immediately after Big Bang, all right? But what is the, the, how it is characterized? If tau represents the time of this equilization, it means that from that moment tau, matter will dominate radiation when it happened. But that will happen after that moment, when densities are equal. The matter density is equal to radiation density. So using that, okay, this equation, we got the seventh equation. And now we seven, we have seven equation, seven announced algebraic. And we can use them easily to, 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 to solve them and to, to find. But it is a little bit complicated mainly because of the neutrinos problem, because they change their nature, if, as it is known as well. You know, at the beginning, in the radiation era, there were relativistic particles, neutrinos. So here is some computation, it's not so difficult, some formulas which says how to, to compute the number, their mass, in fact. And there's related to, in fact, photon densities, as you can see. And this is a very well known formula, how to use this relation. And we using that, we on the end, we find a simple some relation, some of them you can find even in the literature, they're different, they're, they're infrared in some different way. And then we find the time is that happened fifty thousand years after Big Bang, I would say, okay? That is the, the time when, when matter dominated, when matter started to dominate radiation. This is known, of course, values. And in a similar way, we can find all the, all the similar, all the similar or, okay, events or even some important, not similar, but important events in the evolution of the universe. This here is the constant, the values of the constant, that we use them. In fact, they're measured, as I told, as I already said, in, in, in the during this, all these missions in recent years. That would be all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We have, we still have a time for a few questions.
Yeah.
If there are no other questions, I would like to ask you about your choice for Hubble constant. It seems to me that you use Planck constant. Because usually, American scientists prefer Hubble constant.
Yeah, 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 but there are two values.
Now people are speaking even about tensions between different
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I have, we have, we have written the whole paper. It's already finished this paper. And this is also, this was, as you can see, you see H prime and H second, okay? And two different values. So this, we computed for both values, okay? And usually is very small difference. The only difference appear in their graphs, okay? In the graph of, of, of the, of the scale factor. And that happened, this divergence will happen very, very in, in, in some very future. I have here somewhere, but probably during the pause, I can show you how it looks like. But all, I would only say that all the measurements, there were two groups. And in each group, there are several measurements for each group, okay? And, but almost there, glue it, okay? Graphs of scale factor for one group and another group. But there are divergence between these two groups, okay? Probably here is, okay, you can see the different values. We always took the mean value, okay, mean value, so, right? But we, in fact, not only the mean value. In fact, we computed for six these values, for these six values to see how the, the, the tension, really this Hubble tension influence all this computation.
Okay, if there are no other questions, let us thanks all speaker of this session again. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Professor Zaharov.
Okay, I'm kidding. Sorry for my mistakes.
No, all is fine. Thank you so much for being
Very much. Thank you.